House of Order, stand for the place. A place of equal seats to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Frazier?
Yes.
Oh, this has to be changed. We still have Mr. Cook on here. Councilman King?
Here.
Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Fleming?
Here.
Councilman Coon?
Here.
Connie Burkine?
Here.
Attorney Lindsey Lynn?
Here.
Okay, it's time we have the addition, deletion, changes, and approval of the agenda. Audience? Can we get a motion?
I'll make it. I'll make a motion to approve the addition, deletion, approval of the agenda for those new changes.
Second.
Okay. Item one. Approval. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Item two. Approval of minutes from December 19th, 2022 town council meeting. Got a chance to look at that, see Cook in your pocket?
Yeah.
I see that.
I'm making motion to approve the minute for December 19th.
My second.
Then approve the second for the approval of the minutes from December 19th, 2022. All in favor?
No.
No.
Post? I just have it. Item number three, public participation. Anybody that in the public that wants to get up and have something to say, you need to get up and go to the podium. You have three minutes, supposedly, three minutes. State your name. Reasons.
Hi, I'm Chantel Seven Brown with Cats Live. We have a nonprofit in Fort White, and we are speaking of who will use the community center. Our understanding is no charge for that, and we need to be able to reach more people, have them come to us for trap pickup, and meeting and teaching and training them.
You say it is no charge?
For nonprofits? Is that correct?
You have to request that?
Right, that's what we're doing. And we were told to come here to request that. We completed a form.
What do you do?
We provide free and low-cost spay, neuter, and vaccination services for cats in Fort and Fort Whites. With full score of the county, we were able to obtain three grants from very low-known sources, or license plate, grant fund, Petco, and Visal Pet Foundation. And we just need the public to have greater access to us on our days when we're doing trap distribution, and to be able to train them to use the traps to trap their cats. And then they have the cats, we transport them in our vehicle. We have a bus, climate-controlled bus, that they stay in.
You want to use facilities to train people?
To train and do trap distribution, so people can meet us there, pick up their traps, and then bring them back.
And what is the date?
Um, right now, the dates we have set up are February 9th, 10th, and 11th, and then we have some dates in March. It's the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. And then there's the same thing in April. I think it's the 2nd week of April, 2nd, 3rd, we have April. So Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
So that's February, March, April?
Yes, ma'am. We were told, once we received approval, then we would be able to do the application moving forward without having to come back for approvals for each date. Is that not correct?
And you're saying you want like three days out of each month?
Yes, ma'am.
That's...
Give me them days again.
Uh...
February?
February 9th, 10th, and 11th.
March?
March 2nd, 3rd, and 4th.
And April, you didn't say?
Yeah, April, I get the dates. It's on the calendar here already.
Is that something you're going to want to do every month?
13th, 14th, and 15th. We typically do it three months and take the fourth month off. Summer's really hard to do that. We try to do as much as we can for spring before kittens are being born. We all know there's an issue with overpopulation. And thus far, our program's been able to spay and neuter and vaccinate 1,262 cats in the Fort White area.
And what was your April date?
13th, 14th, 15th.
13th, 14th, and 15th.
You said Thursday, Friday, Saturday at each time?
Yeah, normally will be finished on Saturday around noon, 1:00, whenever people get traps back to us, just depending on how many.
And this is inside?
It will mostly be outside. We really need to be able to use the drive-through outdoor thing. Most of it can be staged there. That will allow us to be able to bring in volunteers that can help us. Right now, it's just a few of us doing it, where we can do larger events and more training. The training would be inside. Be nicer to set that outside.
When does the ball field ramp up?
Hmm?
Baseball down there?
It's fixing to get started. Yeah, it's fixing to get started.
Something we can...
My grandson plays this weekend, but not in Fort White.
Right.
Going to town with him, but it's fixing to get started. I wish Ronnie was here.
That's fixing to get started. And also, I mean, it's going to tie up on Fridays and Saturdays.
Right.
That's a lot for every, every month.
Yeah.
On a Friday and a Saturday. That's a lot. That's probably...
Thursday, Friday, and a Saturday? Yes, ma'am.
Is it rented any of them dates right now?
Yeah.
What if we just sort of get fuzzy-wary and then discuss further for March and April?
Do what?
But she's saying if we, I mean, if you want to do it, and she's one of...
Do all three?
All three of them, if you give her the option of doing it.
Yeah. That's, we need to discuss if it's going to get paid to rent it out for a Friday, Saturday. It's when it's busy, right?
Right.
Don't have much on Friday, put a little love on Friday.
Right. Um, is Saturday a necessity, or could you do Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
It's not. Our clinic day is on Thursday, so we have people be meeting us back there on Saturday after we do returns. So our transport day's Thursday, clinic day in Gainesville, all the cats are operated on in Gainesville, is on Friday. And then we would be working with the public again that morning on Saturday morning. And they bring the traps back.
What's involved in training?
Pets allowed in town?
Teaching them how to use the traps.
Our pets allowed in town.
Showing them how to use the traps.
Sure, that'd be right.
The instructions.
I mean, it's got a kitchen.
Checking the traps out to them. Each trap is numbered to make sure that everybody gets their own hat back when we trap our head before.
These pictures are part of my food. We're just, we're just talking about trying to figure this out. That's a lot of dates.
Yeah, right. And I mean, we've been using across the street. This market was generous enough to let us use that across there, the old Southland Center office. It's just, it's not very visible. It's not covered. We don't have an inside area. We basically just show up there for 30 minutes or hour, try to meet as many people as we can.
Don't you like Christie in that building?
No, we don't use the building. That's why we just probably use the...
It's all just been outside.
Right. We have a bus that we use, but it's not like a bus that people can come on.
And we was kind of asking too, as far as, when you say it, the pets inside of the building, because we did, I mean, we do that facility a lot for eating or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. And they're not, well, they're, it's not pets that we do anyway. They're all in traps and they never leave a trap. And that's, we transport on our bus and overnight them on the bus. But they're not pets and they're never out anyway. But, and, I mean, even though there have been other organizations that have set up in places like UF, the City of Apalachicola allows it as well, but not even what we're doing, but literally, they will allow them to set up a shelter. If we were to use it for that, we would leave it cleaner and disinfected better than when we get there. Everything that we use and touch gets disinfected that we use. But that's not how we're planning at this point. Unless that's something you will allow us to do, we can do big events.
I think you need to explain what I, what I actually y'all do.
Okay. So we trap and spay and neuter cats and vaccinate.
Stray cats.
Outdoor cats. They can be friendly, they can not be friendly. So sometimes you can pick them up and put them in traps, sometimes you can't. We have people that have 30 cats, 40 cats, 50 cats. We have people who have one or two or three cats. And we've worked for past three-plus years to do that just in Fort White. I'm from Fort White. That's the only area we do. We do just the outskirts if we have to. And that's how we've spent our time doing that for the county, for our area, for the south end of the county, since there was nothing there. There's no spay-neuter program for our county at all, other than what we provide. And we never charge anyone. We ask for donations, and we're donation-based only. But we were fortunate enough, because we kept our statistics, to receive three grants from three very well-known organizations. And in order to fulfill those grants, we have enough to provide 360 spay-neuters this year for people. We generally do about 400 per year. And we just need the public to be able to have better access to us.
Sure.
It's a lot of money and a lot of work to give up the money that was provided to us from resources. Does that make sense, Rocky?
I just think they love them. They, they go around and set traps out for people that have a bunch of stray cats. And what they do is they spay them, hit the trap and spay and noodle, and then bring them back to them, and they keep them from us.
And then they, all the medical treatment we provide as well. And most of these people who can trap themselves.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, and come back and circle back the next month. Tie it up.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask, am I not asked a question?
Go ahead.
So if I, if I need, if I got a stray cat?
Yes, ma'am.
And got to trap him, and once you do whatever you're going to do to him, what's going to happen to him?
He comes back to you.
No. Straight from jump.
It's spay-neuter returns, trap-neuter returns. So it better keeps them from reproducing.
So if somebody collects these cats, they have to come back and get them?
Right.
And then whatever happens, happens.
Right. So a lot of them, we go out and do ourselves. So if you're elderly, disabled, you can't physically trap or you don't have transportation, we go out and we do that for people. But there are some people who have two or three or four cats, and they can do that. So half of the cats that we take each clinic may be from the public that we have to meet and give them a trap, explain to them how to use the trap, and then they go trap their cat and bring it back to us on our transport day. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to do the volume that we do. It's a lot.
Yes, sir.
It's good.
As an alternative, you know where the train thing is? There's like a little covered spot there. Could they park there? That's a lot of public here. If the community center is not available?
Don't, you know, the metal carport.
Yeah.
Well, I think the problem is what, getting hotter and having AC and being somewhere...
Not necessarily. I mean, if we could use the inside for the training part. I mean, I haven't been to transportation in years.
I mean, would that be okay?
That could be a possible solution, if we could look at that.
And that would be more line of sight in a town. Let's go with what you was just thinking.
We would think, I would think more. Would the green ward be into the home, the depot?
I would be interested in either one, but I would like, if they're going to do it down here, I'd like to try it one time and see before you fully commit all these baseballs, baseballs, softball, and all coming up. And it's just, it's hectic down there sometimes.
It is. And that's why we've been across to this part of the place, because we just couldn't, we used to use the parking lot on the end, and it's just too busy.
Saturday ballgame.
Do what you was thinking and then circle back when the rest of the board's here.
Right. So what if we just say, we will say for February, we'll go for those dates you have on there, the 9th, 10th, and 11th. And we'll say we approve for that and go from there. And then we see how it goes or whatever, and maybe possible the depot would be a better solution or whatever.
Okay. And that's something we can look at then in between. Can you go down there and look at, just come up here and get?
Yeah, come back next year.
Y'all look at it and see, because that would be a lot easier on us.
Yeah, I mean, we would love it. That was our first thought. I just didn't know that that's something that was available to...
It is available.
Okay.
It's a lot more available than the community centers. And it wouldn't interfere with the ball teams and all that.
Right.
Mr. Connaught has something to say?
Yes, sir. Yeah, as far as availability at depot, we might not be available. Now, there's a group coming in, well, I didn't say group, but someone's coming in talking about opening up some accounts, like a bank or something. And they're going to be, within the next two weeks at the depot. They've already requested and talked about it. They came in last week and spoke to a relative.
Who did they, who did they speak to about these?
The town. They came by you. I'm just giving y'all a...
I understand. I'm just saying, I don't know nothing about it.
Well, as far as right now, we're just saying approval for the February anyway, for 19th, 11th, and then for March, we'll, we'll see anyway. So that's...
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Roger Jackson, have a question about a sign that from Riverside, if you come from the post office and head towards 27, you can't see around the sign. The sign is maybe this high off the ground. And I think somewhere it says, you're supposed to have visibility from like two and a half feet up to six feet. If you come right from the post office and look to your left, you can't, look to your left, you can't see anything. And if a semi truck is parked in front of the subway, somebody's going to have a rape. I'm talking, I almost raped that twice already myself.
What is the sign?
It's a river, it's a sign that advertised for Riverside. So they got one right at the corner, right at the corner, that's facing this way instead of being facing the other way, but it's down too low. And people be there, they have a rape. But I almost had a rape that twice already myself.
It's Riverside Nutrition.
I think they would notice that.
And they've already been notified.
They'd be notified already.
Through code enforcement has already paid them a visit about that. And they have no permits for the signs either.
I'm just concerned because my safety and other people's safety. So if somebody already know about it, it's still there.
Yes, yes. Now, I was asking which one, so they have, they have been notified.
No, not the one in front of you.
No, no, I understand. It's right here. It was just not even on their property.
And then they're going to put an open sign on the flag, everybody, and then they're going to make something else.
Now, that lady's been in the hospital all week too.
Yeah. No, it's been there.
I understand that. But she's been notified, but she hasn't been out, I mean, her husband maybe could have moved it, but she, the lady has been in the hospital several days, went back on there. They took it out. But we'll get to it.
Very impressive, my friend.
I'll give Winston Warner a call. He's the head of code enforcement, and see if they have to leave the signs up before they go to the magistrate, or if they can take pictures and utilize pictures and go ahead and take them down. We've asked her to take them down several times. We've had applications laying in here for probably three months for her to come and fill out and get permits for the signs, and she hasn't done it. Anyone else? Public participation?
What's that permit fee?
$50. If not, public participation?
What?
You know, I called earlier, two weeks ago, about having, about doing, I don't know, the council about participation.
Want to step to the podium, please?
Is it more of a request?
I'm sorry?
Oh, request? I'm sorry.
More of a request?
Yeah.
You still need to come up here and...
You've got his kids there.
That can go, Whitney.
What's your name, please?
Thomas Steven.
Thomas what?
Deeter.
Deedeman? Deedeman, okay.
Yeah. Basically, I called about like two, three weeks ago. I'm celebrating my daughter's death anniversary. Come next week and ask about doing the, like, wish lanterns, the ones that you put in the sky. I also come up here to make a request to do y'all about having them done.
You want something to release them?
Yes, sir.
And they're going up?
Yes, sir.
I don't believe we got no say something with that. But they're on our property.
All I did was ask this cousin who, basically saying, I guess, overall, this, the fire health and safety is basically a little poor. So I was told to come up to y'all to ask because different districts are allowing them, I guess.
How many?
You doing them on your property?
Yes.
I don't think we have.
I don't believe we got no dog in that fight.
Don't do anything illegal.
Yeah. Yeah, they're just told to come up here and ask, as I said.
I think you're doing a mess. Don't believe we got none of them.
Hi.
Put your phones in the back end, George.
Anyone else? Not in the public participation. Move on to item number four, new business. Number one, Swanee River Water Management. Mr. Troy Roberts.
Good evening, members of the council. Mr. Rander, Mr. Wilson, and I, and the public as well. We are here tonight to discuss a series of upcoming meetings that we have, and we are seeking community feedback for each of you. Have one of these on the desk in front of you. This is for flood risk. So the water management district and FEMA partner periodically for this to review district flood maps. So these specifically are for the Santa Fe watershed, which is seven different counties, part of which is Columbia County, basically everything south of US 90, which includes Fort White. If you look on page two and three, you can see the watershed study areas. The homework's on page two, specifically Columbia County is on page three. For, lack of better terminology, flood risk means that we're looking at flood zones here in this specific area. So what we're going to find when reviewing these is that there are going to be some people who have lived in flood zones their entire lives, they're going to be moved out to flood zone. It's fantastic for them. We're also going to have some residences who have not been in a flood zone before that are going to be moved in a flood zone. These changes come for a number of reasons. Some of it's new technology, we have better maps than we've ever had before. Some of it's just because of development. So there's a number of different reasons why these changes are taking place. But we want to give people an opportunity to give us feedback if they find that they're in one of these two groups. On page four, you'll see this virtual event space that we are working on. If people are interested, hopefully the website will be up in the next day or two. If you search SRWMD virtual tour, you'll be able to go on that website, put in your address, and find out if you are going to have your changes to your property. If you are, we have three different meetings that are coming up next month. You can come to any of those three and ask questions. We have one on, sorry, it's on the last page, February 21st is going to be at Stark, February 22nd is going to be in Alachua, and then February 23rd, Frontview and Lake City. Fort White residents probably have their choice of whichever one they want to go to, Alachua or Lake City, is the distance will be fairly similar. Again, if we want to give people an opportunity, if they have questions, you know, this is your one opportunity. So these are kind of periodic. Sometimes it's every two or three years, depending on feedback we get from cities or towns or counties. I think there are certain areas, and this has been one of the decades since we lasted in that. So if people have questions about if their house is a flood zone, if it's not a flood zone, and they don't think it should be, these are the opportunities for them to come and ask those questions. But if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer those tonight. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right. Columbia County, number two, updates on water sewer project.
Thank you, council. My name is Stacy Calvert. I'm the utility director of the county. And part of that is, I've been here on the job eight months. I haven't got a chance to come down. So I wanted to introduce myself, also my team. Kevin Johnson, he's the water, wastewater technician here in Fort White. Parker Tomigay, he is the utility superintendent. He's normally stationed in Asheville, but we kind of float around being small, small utility. But as far as the status update, we've been working really, really hard to clarify a lot of the water situations that's happened in this in Fort White. In fact, right now, we have a pump down. We're actually getting it rebuilt mid to late February. We're supposed to go out for a bid and install a water line from Asheville to Fort White and give us more options and better quality of water to the town. We've updated a lot of the operation and maintenance procedures at the facility since the county's entered into an agreement. We're installing new meters and new irrigation tanks, probably March, to really justify, justify the lack of water use and justify water use. You know, we want to conserve our natural resources. So that's going on with that. From what I understand, the grants have been put in and for the wastewater facility, first phase of the wastewater facility in Fort White, hopefully that should be in the first quarter of 2025. That'll be the commercial portion of it, and that's going to obviously take care of the commercial side of it. So we are moving. We're trying to grow. We're trying to do things and trying to correct some of the, some of the water quality issues and metering issues that we've had in town for many, many years. David Kraus, the county manager, he's in the very back. He's, he's kind of the driving force of the county. So we, we're trying, we're trying. So just kind of be patient with us. You know, we're taking it over. There's a lot of maintenance issues that need to happen. There's a lot of operational issues that need to happen. We've changed some filtration, we've changed some processes. And my guys work really, really hard. So if you, if you need something, please call the county, ask for a minute. I'm available. And Kevin will be down here, he's pretty much down here today. Robert's down here multiple times a day, like I said. But that's, I just kind of want to introduce and give an update of the county. The county is really trying to push forward the water and wastewater facilities down here in the Southern and in Fort White County.
I think there were a couple other ideas stationed when we talked about the water complaint and the issue of the ARPA money.
Yes, thank you. So I received an email discussing about a water complaint. And I guess this particular constituent, someone was trying to sell them a water softener. And they, the water softener company tested the water and said it was out of compliance upon further inspection. The water is DEP, EPA, FDPE, it met every requirement on the summit. And it was kind of an issue of the water softener company using guidelines from California that California hooked the pass in 2035. So it's, it was just kind of a situation that wasn't right. But I just, thank you. I did want to clarify. And as far as the town ARPA money, part of the, you know, the town got a, American relief plan grant. We are trying to utilize it for infrastructure. We have started that hydro, hydro tank replacement. The town's agreed to pay for that. The town's agreed to pay if the council agrees, hopefully, with the meter installed, new meters throughout the facility, which will help instead of us wasting water and get more accurate bills. We've got some green sand replacement, which is the first phase of the filtration system at the water facility. It hasn't been replaced since the plant was open in 98. So that filtration system needs to be replaced to have water quality. And the new well pump, hopefully, the town will agree and will be helpful and pay for some of this. Some of this stuff out of the ARPA grant that we have to use by, by the end of March. So just kind of want to say that.
What is, what is the tentative date you hear the water running from Asheville?
The bid should go out mid to late February, in theory, hopefully. The company that's doing the bids, or doing the design, the lead engineer passed away at Christmas. So they're having to do some reshuffling. Ricky Hendricks, he's the lead engineer now, and he is pretty positive. How I say that? He said, Stacy, it'll be by the end of February. I'll have the design documents ready, so me and Mike Knoll and the staff at the county can put them out for bid. At that point, you have a bid process that comes back. We get it all approved, council approved, and then we'll move forward. And hopefully by the start of summer, we should start putting pipe in the ground. That's kind of where I'm at. Depending, depending upon, as we all know, buying anything nowadays, it takes forever, especially if you're ordering a bunch of different materials. The positive side of that is, the county, when I first started, the county gave me the okay to go ahead and order a million dollars' worth of material. So 85% of all the material... So eighty-five percent of all the material needed to do that project is sitting in Ellisville. Thanks. Look forward to working on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, town number three, three A, public hearing.
It's, Vice Mayor, I have four items. The first is the second reading of ordinance twenty-two dash ten, adopting and enacting a new charter for the town of Fort White. This is our public hearing, our second reading. As I discussed at the last public hearing, this is obviously a project that predated me, but it has culminated with the charter being completely redone, removing, mostly removing, things that were outdated or no longer in use or no longer utilized by the town of Fort White. Some of these things that are in the charter, you guys have already adopted along the way. My discussion and recommendation had been that we set this up as an, as an adoption of everything in whole, just in case anything fell through the cracks along the way, we're adopting the new charter as written in whole. So we had our last public hearing, I guess, back in December, and this is our second public hearing for that. Now, you should have those documents there, you should have all these documents in your packet, and the charter has been available here for anyone to take a look at. So I don't know if there's anyone here from the public that's here for this public hearing. If so, this would be a time to speak up or ask questions, et cetera. If there's not, then I would need a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two dash ten, which would adopt and enact a new charter.
Okay, any public? Want to speak on it? Public, on the ordinance. Not you?
Call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve R twenty-two thirty-five.
No, it's twenty.
What is?
It's the first.
The first, yeah, the first.
Twenty-two dash ten, I'm sorry. I was trying to get ahead of myself.
Right.
I'll second.
Okay, it's a moving property, second for ordinance twenty-two ten. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposers? Aye, say it.
The second thing that you have before you is resolution number R two zero two three dash thirty-four. And that would approve the interlocal agreement between the town of Fort White and Columbia County for garbage services. You should also have the interlocal agreement there with you. It's something that the town clerk and myself and the Columbia County attorney have all went over and got it to a final form, and so we're just calling for a resolution to adopt that interlocal agreement again. It's there in the package, if you have any questions, come here.
Questions from the public? Not any? Get a motion. To approve?
I'll make the motion to approve R twenty-two thirty-four.
Second.
Okay, it's moving property, second that we accept the resolution twenty-two three thirty-four for the approval of the interlocal agreement between the town of Fort White and Columbia County for garbage services. Vote by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposers? Aye, say it.
Next item I have is R dash two zero two three dash thirty-five, approval of interlocal agreement between the town of Fort White and Columbia County for lap funding for a sidewalk project on Southwest Portland Drive and Southwest Stillman Avenue. Again, you have a resolution in your packet as well as the.
That is DO, DO two money is the lap funding.
Right.
Right.
Where is Stillman Avenue? Stillman Avenue.
Down by the cemetery.
Down by the cemetery. Where Gene Martin lives.
Okay, yeah. I would've lost that for a minute. Long as I go, the longer I stay, my mom.
It's for sidewalks. Yeah.
Kids out of the cemetery.
Any public?
Anything from the public?
Yes, James Cora, what is lap funding again? Does that mean?
It's a special program through Florida Department of Transportation.
So they pay, they're paying for it, not the city?
Yes. It's a grant.
Okay.
Okay, can we get a motion?
Make a motion to approve R twenty-two thirty-five.
Second.
It has been moved property, second that we have to accept resolution twenty-two three dash thirty-five for the approval of interlocal agreement between the town of Fort White and Columbia County for the lap funding for sidewalk project on Southwest Portland Drive and Southwest Stillman. All?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor, say aye, aye. Aye. Aye, say it.
The last item I have is resolution number R twenty-two three dash thirty-six, approved interlocal agreement between the town of Fort White and Columbia County for lap funding for a sidewalk project on Sky Avenue. So you'll have a new, same process as before, you have a resolution, interlocal agreement again for this grant funding for this sidewalk project.
Right. No?
You want to talk?
I'm gonna talk.
You gonna do it?
Get a motion.
I can make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve resolution R two zero two three thirty-six.
I'll second.
It has been moved property, second for the resolution R twenty-two three dash thirty-six for the approval for the interlocal agreement between the town of Fort White and Columbia County for the lap funding for sidewalk project on Sky Avenue. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Aye, say it.
That's all I have.
Yeah. Number four, Ms. Connor.
I just wanted to let the council and the public know that we were awarding the six hundred thousand dollars to rehabilitate or replace homes of nine low to moderate households. So we'll be getting that information in the future, paperwork, and how, how people can apply, and what the requirements are, et cetera, et cetera. But I just wanted to let everybody know that that's coming out.
That's all she.
And the last thing I have is equipment. We had talked about this before at a meeting about the equipment that's needed here in the town of Fort White, and we have requested a bucket truck and a skid steer. And Buster's here to talk about what they need.
There's something about the equipment, we, at times, we did want a bucket truck and a skid steer, but after, you know, we've been studying, thinking the thing over, and you know, me and Earl, we talked about it, we discussed it a lot. The more important thing now is, we're thinking more or less, we do need a backhoe and a truck, maybe, because of the fact that age. All our equipment that we have is just old. They're at least twenty-five, thirty years. Backhoe, and now they're just, every time we get on a piece of machine, it's breaking down, and I think it's costing us more trying to fix it and keep it running than we should just go out and try to get it or the price of it. As far as the bucket truck, we really thought that it's the thing that we needed, because a lot of times, we have a lot of limbs that we can't get, we have to call the county. And then at Christmas time, we have to do our decorations, and we always got to call the county. So we, at that time, we felt that that's what we needed, but now, like I said, everything's starting to fail us, and we really need to get, look into a dump truck, backhoe, those things that need to be.
I'm in agree with you. I agree with you, Lee, buddy.
All right. Let's work on. Oh, 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 one other thing. Council, we have a basketball court down here, it was a spring, and one goal needs replacing, and then we need the whole goal and post replaced down here.
You need one just the goal, and then you need, then you need the whole thing?
Yes.
Are, are those original?
Those are original.
Yeah.
Any? We might want to do some resurfacing on that court, because I think it's a crack right across the whole court, and you don't want to officialize it by anybody. Do need to update that part down here.
Absolutely.
I agree. Nothing else? Item number five.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Everybody?